Welcome everyone to the city council meeting this evening and if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance and then following the pledge of allegiance, we have our invocation returned tonight by Norman Dicert with the Landmark Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father and government, we come to you tonight asking your blessing and direction on this meeting. Pray, Lord, that the decisions made tonight will benefit the citizens of Bonner Springs and will force me in importance with your will. All we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Do you have a Find My iPad?
Is it right there?
Yeah, it's right what there's one of those, I presume.
Find My iPad app?
You mean like is it?
Pull up your iPhone and search for your iPad.
Maybe.
Yeah. My fingerprint.
Really?
You'll know if your password works.
Moving right along.
My fingerprint doesn't work at all.
My fingerprint doesn't work. I haven't upgraded mine.
I did.
Moving right along to our first item tonight on the city council meeting. Maybe you swapped.
This one's mine because you can tell by the fingerprints.
Hey, Bob.
It should say on it.
Yours is off, hold on.
You should be able to probably get on it with your code.
Thank you. Hey, Bob, you took mine and I've been going nuts wondering why it hasn't worked.
Click that top button and it'll tell you.
We got it, Chris.
You're why we can't have nice things.
Hey, Bob, hit the button. Yeah, there, just hold on, it'll start up.
I know, that's.
Oh, so we have like two and a half hours to draw this out.
You guys are hard on these things.
No, hey, what it is, is I shut it off because I had, you had mine and I had hers.
Well, we'll go ahead while they're doing that. We'll go ahead with the citizen concerns about items not on tonight's agenda, seeing how there aren't any citizens here this evening, so although this is being video recorded.
Hi.
Only after you took mine.
It was conspiracy, he's got something up his sleeve.
Rolling on to our number two item, the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the December 17 meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, appointments to boards and commissions, and the Johnson County reciprocal emergency water sales agreement renewal. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the consent agenda as offered.
So moved in second. Anything to be pulled by the staff? Seeing none, questions, concerns, comments from the council?
How many times have we had to use the emergency water?
Well, yeah, we've got a few different. We actually have this agreement with Water One and we also have an agreement with BTU. Typically, we'll use BTU when we have a need for water. Currently, we're actually kind of going back and forth with BTU to use some of their water if we're dealing with issues at our water treatment facilities.
Okay.
So it's ever so often.
Yeah, that's, that's all I just, because when it has the word emergency hook to it, you know.
Yep.
Yeah, all right.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Max?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to our regular meeting agenda, which the first item is an agreement to purchase the Veritra Use of Force Training Simulator. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Billy Dapp, Chief of Police. Before you tonight, I have a request to authorize the purchase of the Vertra Use of Force Training Simulator. Background, essentially, police training is very important. One of the biggest things for us is we don't want to have the first time an officer encounters something to be in a live situation. The Use of Force Simulator allows us to kind of practice those techniques and tactics that we utilize, especially de-escalation and those types of things. This system will allow us to bring it out to a public event, allows people to go through it. It's a total encompassing system. As indicated, there's two main different companies out there that are the big two, essentially, for the system, and Magid and Vertra. Vertra just offers a lot more than for the book. Lawrence PD actually has a Vertra system. They're very, very pleased with it. I've had contacts with both. Vertra's been the easiest to work with, so aside from that, I'd answer any questions.
Very good. Seeing no comments from the citizens, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the purchase of the Vitra Use of Force Training Simulator for a total cost of $79,255.
Second. Moving in second, and we'll start down here with questions, concerns, comments.
Hope it works for you.
Chief, do we have any ability to lease this to other departments, say Edgersville or anybody else? Is it that type of system?
From my, from my experience, I think we'd be better served having one of our trainers allow them to come in and maybe charge them for that training.
Okay.
And from my experience with simulators, when other agencies take them, they tend to break them. And then the age of originating agencies, the ones seven are holding the bill.
Okay.
But yes, they could come and utilize it. We can, we've already had a few agencies calling us and hey, can we use it? So it is something we can consider.
Okay, cool. So it's not like a box or it's not something that would be fixed at the station that they can come over and do? We'd have to give it to them?
No, we can take it there. It's completely mobile, that's why the system we're going with. We were interested in the 180. Basically, it's three screens compared to one screen. The problem with that is the footprint. Once we get the new police station, as you've seen in the proposal, in two, at the end of two years, we can make a decision if we want to upgrade to that system at a dollar for dollar rate, which is something we can consider at that time.
Cool, okay, thanks, sir.
That was going to be my question is will we need to upgrade it in two years?
You know, I would tell you, the newest systems right now are five screens. They're 300 degrees, they completely encapsulate. From an officer perspective, the more we can throw at them, the better. You know, things coming behind them, different noises, different things like that. Ideally, it would be nice. It's not something we have to. We have options. This is the only system that gives us that option at a dollar for dollar. The base price of just the 180 is $180,000, so it's a significant investment to do that.
And to be able to upgrade later would be a cost savings.
Yes, if we, as long as we maintain our annual maintenance, which is included in it, they're estimating about $50,000 to upgrade.
What will be upgraded, the technology or the scenarios or both maybe?
We get all the new scenarios every, all the time. The, so as long as we maintain that maintenance agreement, whatever's the latest, greatest, we constantly get. The technology, basically, would expand to this three-screen module. And then at that point, it becomes fixed. So for example, in the new police station, we have a recommendation for an overhead projector. We could put that up. It's already, the system's established to do that, but right now, we wouldn't have the footprint to do that. Thank you.
Very complete answers and thank you so much for this looking ahead thing.
In regards to what they were talking about, the upgrade to the 180, is it locked that you have to wait for two years or if the need were to arise and we saw a path to go ahead and upgrade early, is that possible?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you wouldn't be locked into having to wait for two years?
No.
And then just one quick question on the budgetary document they sent. There was a small amount for shipping and handling. Does that need to be included in the, in the motion, what is approved, or is that shipping and handling not? In the budgetary document, the total price was $79,255, but there was 500 for shipping and handling.
I think that was included inside of the $79,255.
Well, they show a grand total of $79,755 with that. So that's why I wanted to make sure we're getting the right amount.
Yeah, we need to be included.
So do we need to amend that motion then accordingly?
Yeah, just as a motion not to exceed that $79,255.
Seven fifty-five. The new one.
I'll turn that over to Mayor to ask for that amendment.
This will be a second amendment. It's handled a lot like a second motion, so I would entertain a motion to increase the maximum allowable spendable limit to seventy.
Motion that we amend that current amendment to raise the maximum amount to $79,755.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed by acclamation, we'll continue with discussion, sir. Nothing else? It's been my feeling in the past, we've been very supportive of the police department and look forward to doing that in the future, or I, at least I certainly do. This certainly seems like something that would be a benefit to the department in attracting new officers. I would, do a lot of other agencies around here have this kind of training equipment.
Predominantly, the bigger agencies. ARC has a system, has a Magid system that they allow people to check out. Problem with that is, is it's dated and you're getting on the list and you can only have it for a couple of days, so it always makes it tough for agencies to get their people through.
Right, right.
This is going to give us an advantage in that. So yes, as we've been doing interviews, this is one topic that keeps coming up and we're excited about it.
Great, well, that's exactly what I was hoping for, so that's great. And we, we want to be on the leading edge, not the trailing edge.
Not the tail end.
Very good. Moved in second, no additional questions, concerns, comments, vote please.
Hurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wait a minute.
Hold on.
Did you call for Mr. Reeves?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, I hear you.
Go with Braille, he'll understand.
Max?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood? Yes.
Very good. On to item number two, authorize the purchase of a high-threat body armor from Tyra Tactical.
Mr. Mayor, Billy Dapp, Chief of Police. Before you tonight, I have authorized the purchase of high-threat body armor from Tyra Tactical. One of the things in the 2019 budget was the purchase of critical safety equipment for officers. One of the things we're lacking in the police department is the ability to outfit officers with high-threat level body armor. These systems are very expensive, which is why we're only asking for five compared to asking for 25. The biggest problem that we face nowadays is what we would call high-threat rifle systems, R15s, AK-47s, those types of things, any type of rifle. Unfortunately, in our quiet little city, we've had encounters where people have shot at us, especially with rifles. Most recently, as of about two weeks ago now, we found an AK-47 behind a bank with still core ammunition, which is an art appearance.
Wow.
So the need exists for us to start upfitting our officers. Historically, the officers took it upon themselves to buy their own, which is not a good professional practice to have. There's a couple of different systems out there post some of these big critical events that came out. Steel plate armor is probably the biggest one that's came out. If any of you have any desire, I can show you one, but it weighs about 60 to 80 pounds. And so it's too heavy for them to wear, they're not going to wear it.
Of course.
So this system is really designed to fit the officers. We're going to assign them to our tactical patrol officers in the interim. They're the ones that are generally tasked with going to face most of these violent threats from their positions.
Very good. Thank you very much. No additional questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the purchase of high-threat body armor from, is it Tyra? Tyra Tactical?
Tyra Tactical.
Thank you. Tyra Tactical for a total cost of $10,120.25.
Second. So moved in second, we'll start down here with questions, concerns, comments, I think.
What kind of life expectancy on this? Because I think if I'm not mistaken, normally body armor has a certain life, even if it's not used.
Correct. Most manufacturers will tell you every five years you need to replace or upgrade the body armor. We've talked to like Kansas Highway Patrol, their body armor seems to be holding up fine, but they're having to replace it as the carriers. So this doesn't fall under the Department of Justice NIJ grant. It has to be custom body armor, so this is something outside that scope, which requires a five-year replacement. So for us, we'll evaluate that as it continues on, things that affect it, the officers dropping it, if sweat, you know, use those types of things, how to maintain, those are general factors that we have to look at on the body armor for how well they'll hold up.
So you can actually do a review of it to determine if it's within that five years, if you can give it a little bit more life or shorter life, rescind maybe. Okay, thank you.
It looks like it's component-based, so you can replace pieces as needed.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You've asked all the questions I would.
No questions.
Chief, you said that right now, excuse me, we're, we're asking for five with the cost of $10,120, but you said 25, of course, would be. What, what is driven or why the, the $10,000 figure versus more? Where did that figure come from and?
To outfit every officer, we're talking approximately $75,000, because this is just one piece. You have body armor and then you have ballistic helmets, especially in the wake of like the Pulse nightclub shooting and obviously the Vegas shootings, the various different shootings officers have faced. The six pillars of, of the law enforcement 21st century thing talks about, you know, providing officers armor.
Right.
So there's two kinds of scopes of that. There's body armor itself and then there's ballistic helmets. So this is just one piece, it's expensive. So there's other programs out there. Shield 16 is one that you probably see on the news recently where they're trying to buy vests for, or police officers. That's a program that we would like to continue to explore in the future to see about getting every officer something.
Absolutely.
But from, from this perspective, it's just a budgetary restriction. I mean, you know, $75,000 is a lot.
Oh, absolutely, but I was, I was curious why, you know, why the 10,000 or what, how did that $10,000 figure apply versus 16 or 23 or whatever? So why was that $10,000 figure selected?
Well, for the total critical safety equipment, we did $28,000 for the year for all items. When we started TNE and the different vests, which is trial and error, the different vests, this was the one system that kind of we kept coming back to and that everybody recommended. So that's how we arrived at the 10,000.
So that 10,000 is part of the, and the other, the other amount is going to other areas there?
Correct.
Okay, great, so I would, I would like to know that if we eventually, or how we could see raising this, you know, not necessarily tomorrow, but you know, by next Monday would be great.
And again, this is, this is, again, this is a kind of a new unit, police department putting together over the last couple of years, so Chief and his staff will try to get critical safety items in the hands of people that are.
Right.
So that, that's part of that figure as well, it's just simply the number of people that are part of this, this unit. And ultimately, as Chief said, there will be some other items as well. Ultimately, I think we'll probably reevaluate this for 21 as well, getting to your question as far as what we need to do to even be successful in deploying.
I think I, I really can't speak for everybody, I won't, but I think I could, and that is the fact that if this could be expedited or fast-tracked for our officers and everybody concerned, that would be, I know I would really be in favor of it, but again, that's entirely up to you and telling you what we can and can't do, but yet there's any spares there.
We are, again, we're diligently working, professionalized as a department as well as making sure that the quality of service meets the expectations of residents and certain levels. And it's, it's a, it's something with a finale to it, it's going to continue to be a great investment over the years, to make sure that, again, that it's, we have some more conversations about this.
Good.
Sean, could we include any of this in the outfitting of the police station whenever we do all of our funding for it?
As far as making that part of the financing?
Correct.
You could, I would probably tell you it would be a lot easier just to look at it as part of the budget and say, what is it that we have, existing revenue sources and ultimately make those decisions as part of that. Probably it's not simply you want to finance the system, obviously pay an interest.
Of course, okay.
But certainly, I think, an option as we look at some of the other items that are going to have to be part of the department facility.
Correct.
Is to look at some of the additional equipment. As Chief alluded, if we want to go and deploy the simulator full level.
Yeah.
That's an addition, that's a significant amount of money.
Of course.
So then we're, we can come back to those conversations and that.
Okay, all right, thanks, sir.
Very good. Anything else, no? No other questions, concerns, comments, vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Hurley? Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Max?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to item number three, the solid waste residential trash and recycle rate increase. Staff?
The city through the unified government has an airlock agreement whereby we contract with waste management to provide the completely residential commercial trash recycling services. And we are part of that agreement through the unified government. Unified government actually goes and approves rates, which are not subject to the city council approval. This was something that was discussed as we prepared the 2019 budget. All in all, it's, it's about a 55 cent increase, which is roughly 4%, a little less than 4% increase over the cost of what was paid in 2018. Again, this isn't a, a cost necessarily that the city of Bonner Springs is, is charging, it's a, it's a charge that we incur because we are contracted through the unified government to provide this service. So again, we're looking for a motion to approve an increase for the residential trash and curbside recycling from $14.95 to $15.50, which will take effect February 1, 2019. Happy to answer your question.
Thank you very much. Seeing nothing from the citizens, I go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to increase the solid waste fee charged to customers for trash and recycling services from $14.95 to $15.50 effective February 1, 2019.
Second. Moved in seconded, we'll start down here with questions, concerns, comments? No, sir?
I'll go last.
Waving your right, okay, sir.
Do all citizens in the Bonner Springs area, I mean, I know we recycle and great big dump, being dumpsters out at the lake, but that is still considered?
We have little bins in the rest of town. Is that your question?
Yeah.
That's part of this?
Have we made any, we, the grand scheme, we made any progress in conversation about the level of service that's being delivered?
As far as the misses and recycling, I think that we're having a lot less issues than we were about a year ago. As you recall, we had a few weeks there where it was very difficult. I would say those issues hadn't totally resolved themselves, but they are certainly a lot better. What we do is that when we hear from a resident that either they've been missed, we contact waste management, we'll contact the unified government, the police office, at least make sure that that's being addressed. The unified government has gone through and has started to ask, was asking that, call the 311 system, which is their accounting sort of platform for reporting, so at least then they can, you know, hold some level of accountability there in terms of frequency, where it's at and so on. But again, we do our best as the city of Bonner Springs, contact that with all of this management, get them out there. Again, it's, we try our best simply to just respond to the residents and try to get something out there.
That's good to know, because I just called waste management directly.
Yeah.
If for reporting purposes, people need to go through 311, then?
And that was the direction that the county was kind of putting out there this summer, was call through 311. That way, that it's documented. They've been having ongoing discussions with waste management about that quality of service. Again, that's, I'm not necessarily sure, there's a lot of variables as far as why they were missing that unfamiliarity with roads, staffing, equipment, you name it. Again, I would say our call frequency as far as this has gone down quite highly.
Just as a sidebar on quality of service, not a big deal, I guess, but a few weeks ago, right after Christmas, when it was, day was moved like to Wednesday instead of Tuesday on those two weeks, and in our neighborhood, they usually came sometime around 11 or 12 o'clock, but we still get our trash out, you know, at 7 o'clock. So that particular morning, several of us, I guess, got out there at 2 minutes to 7:00 and the truck had gone already. Now, yeah, they're trying to get on their way, I understand all that. Two minutes is not a big deal, but you know, you got, you get your trash out there.
Yeah, so the only thing I would say is that in those types of situations, if you can contact, if the truck is still in town, we're able to call there if you go to waste management, they can reroute those individuals to come back and take those areas up. Again, if it's, if it's a matter of a few minutes or even maybe an hour or two, we're still probably able to get somebody to come in and pick that back up.
And, and that's very reasonable and, and I knew that, but I wasn't too worried about it because I'd already gotten mine out, except I was taking out one more bag and didn't quite make it.
And?
I have one more for you.
Yes.
How many, I forgot to ask, how many increases off the top has unified government made here in the past?
You know, I think they've been pretty quote unquote good about trying to do this every year. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, usually it's annually.
So it is kind of an annual increase?
Yeah, they do it as part of their budget, so they're looking again, similar to what we do with water and wastewater rates, they're looking at what their changes are from a cost of production or what have you. So yeah, it's an annual typically.
Thanks, Sean.
All right, last.
There's no basketball games, I'm holding anybody up for anything.
Yes.
The, I went to a legislative body meeting with the senator and the, what is it, the board of representatives for Wyandotte County or whatever they are, and the House representatives, I think it was last week, and neither Kathy Wolfmore nor Tom Burrows, whom are both on the taxing committee for our, actually for a whole state, could give me a reason why Bonner Springs individually is subsidizing the purchase of land for Deffenball. I went through and, I mean, I've been doing some of the tax stuff here recently, trying to go through and find different properties and just try to find ways we could offset the courthouse, and we have subsidized 784 acres of waste management, or they use the holding company Deffenball now, to the tune of about $500,000 in the past eight years. And I know 50 cents isn't really that much, but I would really appreciate if somebody from the, from the appraiser's office and even somebody from the county or whoever does the budgeting for this could come out and at least explain to us why, if you look upon the county, all this information is public, on one plot of the land that they own, this the former Bucy, what is it?
Unicam.
What's that?
Bucy Unicam.
Yeah, Bucy Unicam Gypsum Plant. That's the only one that they're paying anywhere near a market rate for their 220 acres. It's appraised at 1.6 million and they're paying 69,000, but it's kind of a, I'm not saying it's a cover-up, but it's fudged a little bit because the other five plots that they own, that's the remainder of the 750-some acres. As an example, they have a 40-acre plot that's right off of K-32 and K-7. It went, in 2010, it was appraised at 348,000 and they were paying the county $6,480. It went, in 2010, it was appraised at 348,000 and they were paying the county $6,480. This year, it was appraised at $2,570 and they paid us $128. It's a 40-acre plot, and if they're trying to justify that that's $2,000, I'll buy it from, or I'll buy it for $5,000 tomorrow. I mean, I, they can't justify that. I can go through all the numbers, all the most recent sales through Bonner, through any plot, anywhere in Bonner, and you can't buy a single lot or at least an acre plot for under $20,000. I mean, you can't buy a quarter of an acre for, I think that's one of the lowest prices is 20,000 right now. Another one that they had was 167 acres, it was appraised in 2010 for 1.35 million. They were paying the county 25,000. In 2018, it was re, or it was, it actually raised, from 2017 it was at 10,000, 2018, they gave them 100% increase of 21,000 for 167 acres. So it's not even, I mean, agricultural farmland, to give you guys, or to give anybody watching the YouTube video, justification, agricultural farmland in our area appraises for about 1,000 to 1,500 an acre, and this is absolutely nowhere near even $1,000 an acre. So if we could have somebody come out and maybe do a workshop with the appraiser and how their, what, I mean, what happened in 2011 to where all these fell off? Because we're losing about $10 million in appraised value, and there's, I think there's probably 20 other plots of land throughout Bonner that I found have done the same thing in 2011. That's my soapbox, I'm off. Thank you, guys. I don't approve of the increase.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote, please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Girly?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to the 2019 PHA Accounting Fee Contract.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman Kerry Frederickson, PHA. I am just here to get approval for our contract for our fee accounting firm, which if you look on their contract pages 2 through 3, was the plethora of things that they do for us, they prepare our monthly financials, they help us keep in compliance with HUD financially, do our year-end financials, as long as, as well as all of the annual operating money that we get, we have to have a whole bunch of financial forms turned into HUD by the end of February every year, they do all of those. So the amount that they charge is really small for what they do for us for months before I've been here, and I've had no issues with them. I guess that's it, I'll answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, and seeing nothing from the citizens, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the 2019 PHA Accounting Fee Contract with Lindsay and Company, Inc.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded. Take your pick, and we'll start with questions, concerns, comments down here. Ed?
Nothing.
None.
Sir?
None.
Sir? So there, do they not work when the federal government is shut down since they're reporting to HUD or?
Not working.
Oh, very good. Well, that, that's good. Thank you very much. Vote, please.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Girly?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to reports, the first being the city manager's report.
Quick reminder that city offices will be closed on January 21st in observation of our Little King Junior Day. That also affects trash and recycling, which was delayed one day.
7:02 AM.
They did that because of you, Reeves.
Yeah.
Beyond that, just wanted to point out one thing that's going on in the city, which I think is really showing a lot of the professionalism as well as the consideration that the city employees have for financial stewardship. The police department as well as, well, it's actually Amber McCullough and then some members of the police department have been working to get what's called FirstNet, a cell phone program that's actually administered or part of a bigger program to try to get the first responders' cellphone access in the event of cataclysmic sort of scenarios. Beyond that, though, it's also a very good program as far as just the cost, and I've given you a little bit of that as far as what it means to us.
Excuse me?
Beyond that, we've also been going through to look at our, our phones in City Hall currently. This, I think, just kind of underscores some inefficiencies that we find with this facility, one of which is simply just the phones here in City Hall. What we're looking to do is actually go through and eliminate our antiquated, like our service, and then as well as just trying to dismount some unnecessary lines, dismount some lines. All in all, what will happen is there's a voice-over IP or Internet Protocol service that will come in, which is estimated to save us about $60,000 to $80,000 just by switching over the system.
Wow.
Again, a significant, a significant increase, or rather decrease in the cost of just running the city. But again, beyond that, that, that sort of idea stemmed from the effort of the police department to try to look at the cell phones and what's being deployed for those individuals, and then it spun into this. So again, I just wanted to give some kudos to city staff as well, just to point out that efficiency is something that we really look for in the city as far as trying to deal with these, again, outrageous costs when you're talking about $60,000 to $80,000 that can be re-appropriated somewhere else. So beyond that, also wanted to mention that Frank Abart has started today as Public Works Director for the city. Frank, I've had the opportunity to get to know him, spent a lot of time with him, he's a senior city staff, he got a chance to speak with the mayor earlier this morning. Frank is coming from the city of the core area where he was Public Works Director there, he brings 40 years of experience, a little over 40 years of experience in that field, so I think a tremendous hire, a wealth of knowledge, just started to really hone in on this consolidated Public Works Department that we have that has both streets as well as the utilities that we have. So again, a great thing. And then last but not least, this has been somewhat of a topic of conversation, a few of the meetings, just wanted to point out, if you're not a follower of the Police Department's Facebook page, it's good for information as well as maybe to do laps here and there if you get in touch. But the, the Police Department is working diligently to start to, to work on nuisances. So they've kind of sent out that information as a call to arms, so to speak, to pick up your yard, you know, get rid of the old junker car that hasn't run for 20 years. Again, just general upkeep around, around your hall, around your business. Again, a great effort on that front, I want to thank the Police Department, Mr. Seitz for all they do in that endeavor. And lastly, I want to point out, this has come up as well, that currently working with Dan Trent, who acts, carrying the access to City Attorney to solidify that arrangement with an actual agreement. I believe there was an agreement at one point in time, however, that was a number of years ago. Then we're, again, if it was still in place, I mean, it's probably outdated anyway, so that'll extend itself to both the City Attorney functions as well as a separate agreement that stipulates sort of the expectations as far as the city prosecutor is concerned as well. So again, that, that does tie a little bit to nuisances as far as how those things were proceeded through the courts once they got to citation, things like that. So again, some, some things that I want to make sure you all are aware of, as I will inevitably, come back to you all as far as I'd like to have you guys approve those agreements and get those all taken care of. So beyond that, that concludes.
Very good. Thank you very much. Our next report are the city councilmen's items, and we'll start down here again, sir? Anything to?
Yeah, along the lines of what you just spoke about, Sean, I'm interested in making sure that our municipal court cuts down on the number of continuances that seem to be plaguing that institution so that we can move things along, especially as it occurs in the nuisance ordinances. And is the nuisance ordinance, is that official now that we have that, or are we still?
Well, our effort right now is to, is to really get done what we have on paper currently. There are a few things that, again, we're just working through as far as what's written on paper, the other endeavor that we're embarking on or the city clerk is working on is recoplication, something I brought up at two council meetings, just so everybody's aware of what that term means. Recoplication is a process that you, you go through your entire book of ordinances. So again, we've got several pages of local law, and those are reviewed to ensure that there's no duplication, that there's no, it says something here and says something here type of situations, as well as just ensuring that they are applicable as far as federal and state law is concerned. So within that, if we embark down that road, the review of the nuisances as far as what the state says that we can do, nuisances gets into due process pretty quickly as far as what you're required to do and your ability to come in and dispute certain things. So it's a very legal procedure. But again, we're, we're working towards, I think, addressing nuisances as well as just how we handle our ordinances on a multifaceted front here. But again, I think it, it starts with the efforts of just the city employees to enforce the laws, anybody that works for the city to take that the next step, as you alluded to, as far as how those things are handled through this court or otherwise. And then ultimately, again, the, what we have on paper needs to, to match what we expect as a quality of service. So this takes a little bit of time, recopification takes a little bit of time. But again, I think that as we're working through the enforcement part, you can, you will start to see those things through. But I would, I'd venture to say as well that I think we already are seeing some of the fruits of their labors as far as ensuring that things are, again, meeting a standard that we all want to have in our community.
And that's good, I appreciate that. I'm just interested in that from, one of the standpoints anyway is that we're supporting our police department. I know that some, if not many, of our police department members are feeling somewhat frustrated when something goes to court and then not much happens or it's continued and continued and continued. I just want to get to the bottom of that.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
Just something real simple, I just wanted to recognize the, appreciate the Public Works staff for this weekend, they did a wonderful job and getting it cleaned really quick, and I didn't hear any complaints, I can tell you that.
Me neither.
Pass along our, appreciate you.
I did two quick questions. Have we heard any update on what's happening with the Crane Company out on 32?
I don't have an official update necessarily from, from them, where they kind of left things, where they graded out the site. I know that they were dealing with some issues, that's, that's one thing that I've talked with our community account development directors, well, some city planner on, it's just exactly what needs to be done to ensure that that site isn't left in its current state, which is a large pile of dirt. So again, we're, we're having some of those conversations internally. I don't have anything officially or to be honest with you unofficially from the Crane Company as far as what they're planning to do at this point.
Interesting. Just kind of all of a sudden fell flat after...
Yeah, there was, there was a little bit of a lag in behind in terms of what could happen there because of some delays with KDOT specifically to get access onto the highway there, so that took a little bit of review. Again, they were out on the site, they were today and they didn't see much of the situation, they were so wrong. So again, we're trying to kind of figure that one out.
Just waited. I know we're trying to avoid work on 138th Street for as long as possible, but the ditch has now eaten a tree and several cones.
That's offensive.
Ends up fencing, yes.
I wouldn't necessarily say that we're delaying that necessarily, that is something that I did talk with Mr. Abart today about his, some of the status of these projects, obviously, I mean, so the street is a significant forward for the city, you know, as well as the simple fact that I think some of the erosion issues that we see out there underscore why we need to do something with that road. It's not just the surfacing, it's, it's not just the utilities, it's, it's not just the swamp water, it's all of those things on that. So where we're at on that is really finalizing the design of that project. I'd like to take that back to MARK, the Mid-Meridian Regional Council, they are the distributor of federal funds for this metro area. We didn't score that high, rather enough to, to get any funding from them, pass around. My hope is to kind of tweak that project as we're finalizing it and hopefully get that a few more points. They're all based on points, unfortunately, one of the points that MARK uses, unfortunate for us, I mean, smaller community, usually the communities that need the money the most, that they look at populations or one of those things.
We're screwed on that.
Comparing ourselves to Johnson County as an example, if you go compare that, it's just, it's difficult for us to score very well. So we have to look at other ways of really padding it as far as, you know, where we're at on that. They look at things like, oh, multivotal, do you have benches along the corridor, or do you have this or that or otherwise? So that process is, is going to quickly be restarting again the next couple of months, and that's again a whole evaluation process. I sit on what's called the Surface Transportation Committee, Surface Planning Committee, they review the, these funding applications or requests, and then they go through different layers of review, total transportation community, and then ultimately it's funded in some portion or another, so.
And that process is realistically nine months?
Which part?
From the application to the funding?
Yeah, realistic, maybe a little shorter than that, about six months. I would tell you that in the current state of that corridor and all the issues involved in it, obviously funding for it is unfortunate as far as trying to look at all other resources, but ultimately, again, that's a decision that you guys as a council staff have to weigh as well, is how important is the street for us to get this done in this timeframe, and absent any other funding from the, from the state or through MARK or anybody else, the city's going to be left paying for that some way or another. Again, the reason that, that road was looked at is originally was that its importance in terms of our road network, it really is normally north-south corridor in the city of Bonner with the exception of Highway 7. It's proximity to the schools, that's why we, you know, ideally the whole stretch of 138 would be redone. That was about $10 million, is what we came to find for that three-mile stretch. So we've, we've gone back, we've just isolated that one-mile stretch, abiding the school there, so. And then, you know, beyond just, you know, the function and everything else with the road, it's, you know, something needs to be said about just the aesthetics of it.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt you.
Please.
But to kind of follow up on what, you know, Mrs. Girly was talking about, the same point I brought up too, is, is the concern is, and I know there's a lot of other issues, is until we get to that point, we don't want to lose a road completely, and that's where I think the concern is, is what can we do to shore up that we don't start to, that road doesn't become more compromised?
Right. And that's one of the things that, you know, we continue to monitor, is just how that is getting away at that, that road base, that didn't start yesterday, it didn't start a year ago, you know, it's been going on for some time, so. So, one of the things that we're doing, again, is we section off those areas to ensure that people are aware that those aren't there. That drop into that ditch is still there regardless of the conditions of the road. So, we'll go back through there to kind of shore up those areas to make sure that we're not going to lose an entire section of roadway.
Yeah, and that's what I'm concerned about, is just not lose any more.
Yeah, so that's, again, so we go out there, we've been monitoring that to at least make sure that there's, you know, that there's not any loss of roadway there. But, again, that gets into the need to look at that road from a safety standpoint. And, again, we're aware of it, we continue to monitor it and to, again, make sure that there's a safe flow of traffic along that street in the meantime while we're trying to figure out how we're going to fund that street.
Thank you. Tell for me.
I may have voted yes on the solid waste thing and everything, but I'm really concerned about what Jordan said. It sounds like there's a lot going on between a big company coming in and taking over a dear little town, and I would like to find out about that.
Sure.
I mean, that just sounds like, and it sounds like there's darkness and, you know, there's sneakiness. So, how do we look into that?
What I can do is, if you have some information, I would gladly take that.
You're all laughing. I did my research.
Bring that to the attention of the county appraiser, just ask her, and then maybe I can come back to you all with her two cents as far as what's going on there. Again, the county went through a pretty significant reappraisal over the last couple of years, continues to kind of tweak how they're assessing things. I'm not an expert in that, in that context. But, again, I think Kathy, I think I have that information. So, I'd gladly take what you have and visit with her and bring something back to you all.
I was going to say, make sure you bring the whole council, because I would be interested.
Yeah, I'm just fascinated by, it sounds like a big company has said, well, you can do this for me, can't you? You know, and I, yeah.
Right.
Thank you for doing that homework, Jordan.
That's what our job is.
Congratulations, chief, on Major Dickelson passing on that death. I think that's pretty, with his accomplishment. How did he get in the running for that or selected?
I would tell you, the FBI National Academy is a highly competitive. I was able to utilize some of my contacts, having attended the FBI National Academy and that networking that you gained from that is really kind of how you get your foot in the door. So, the other part of that is you've got to have a good candidate to send through. He's pretty fortunate, as I said, the average length of time it takes somebody is about seven years. He made it in about a year.
Wow.
Wow, goodness.
To understand the FBI National Academy, less than 1% of law enforcement in the world ever gets to go.
My goodness.
Between 19 and 20 countries represented. That's the thing. So, it's a tremendous ordeal to get to send somebody for a department our size, generally speaking. The federal government sees small agencies as 150 or less officers. They have what's called CSLeads, which is kind of 50 to 150. So, for us to send somebody to that is a tremendous ordeal and establishes the future for the City of Bonner Springs leadership.
Good job.
Well, and also the platinum award that you were given for the Department of Transportation, etc. Wow.
Along with the appraisal info, when I was going through a lot of the plots and stuff through GSI, I was curious, do we have anybody, since we've had some staff turnover here and there, doing anything about the tax arrears? I noticed, I probably found 10 different plots that were between five to 10 years in tax arrears.
Well, we don't necessarily handle those things. Again, that's a function of the county government is ensuring that people are paying taxes. I'd say that we're not aware of that.
Yeah.
We certainly are. Tilly LaPlante has always kind of gone through and monitored.
Correct.
Those things typically are city treasure.
She mentioned to me that Don used to do that, is why I was asking.
Those things are things that we look at, like the land bank.
Okay.
We work with the land bank, and they usually will keep us pretty well apprised to how things are working through. So, again, we've got kind of a working list. The land bank monitors that same information. They'll contact us. Chris Slaughter is the individual that runs that.
Yeah, the Wyco Land Bank.
We would want to take that property as far as typically a dilapidated property.
Correct.
A trust that nobody can find, or a more often not a vacant parcel that just is a remnant, is what we call that, a parcel institute to build on. So, again, they monitor those things through the county. We'll look at them. But, again, we try to at least have some level of cooperation, collaboration with the county on that, because, again, they're the ones that are maintaining the property.
Gotcha. Is there any way to put a little bit more of a kibosh on it? The reason I say is because you were mentioning the lots.
Yeah.
And there's, we've got at least, I mean, six, seven lots that I found really quickly that are excessively in arrears. I mean, one of them was $12,000, and the worst one that I found was $130,000. And that's all within the confines of Bonner. I mean, so we could probably find, once again, with the courthouse stuff, a couple hundred thousand dollars in revenue.
Right. So, what would happen, just in the case of the land bank, more or less typically when properties have reached that level of being in rear?
Yeah.
The owners have walked away.
Correct.
So, the possibility of us recouping that money is pretty small. And then also, obviously, keep in mind that that's their total tax bill, not the City of Bonner Springs' tax bill. Usually, especially, that's on their too, their interest. What the land bank will do if they come and take that over, which is more often than not, the city has ever, to my knowledge, gone in and actually acquired property that has been, well...
In arrears.
In arrears.
Are we able to do that? And the reason I ask is because, I mean, several of these are within the NRP program, and they'd be perfect build lots.
Yeah, and that's been something.
Hey, Sean, if I can interrupt, I think Don mentioned one time, if there are properties that are going to go up for auction because of the rear, that if the city focuses and sees a property that might be of use, he then can contact the county appraiser's office and say, we'd like to have that one in the land bank.
Right.
Which then they can...
In our land bank?
Well, go into Windup County Land Bank and then eventually come to the city. But it has to go through the proper process at the county level.
Gotcha. And then we can resell those as a city?
We haven't. So, a land bank, just one-on-one really quickly, a land bank will, it's a quasi-governmental agency that exists that allows more or less the land bank to come in and take these properties off the tax rolls, clean them of...
Yeah, washes the title.
And then, yeah, so you have a clean, clear title. So, then what the land bank, land banks typically do, a good example would be Kyalov County, which is in Ohio. They'll go through and either repurpose those lots one way or another, be it assembling a bunch of lots together and then using that for a bigger footprint.
Gotcha, correct.
And sell those to, and this is what Windup is starting to do, is have, this is a new thing for them.
Correct.
Is to go and take these properties, give them to developers.
Yeah.
Developers will go and...
It's part of their 10,000 program.
Right. So, then, and then they get back on the tax rolls that way. I talked with Chris, oh, we traded some emails, that's been a few months ago. We don't have a lot of properties that kind of fit that mold that they take on to that. So, it takes about three years to get into that sort of share of sale when the...
Oh, just to start that process?
Usually, you've got to be three years in arrears before that even gets to the radar as far as...
Correct.
Something that we want to acquire. Again, a lot of the properties that we have that aren't, are kind of sitting around, are properties that are more right-of-way things that are getting maintained anyways, they haven't been consolidated with the right-of-way as far as what you see on.
Yeah, GIS.
But, again, we try to just have those levels of dialogue with the county. And as Tom alluded to, we're either notified or re-notified them that we want this property.
Correct.
Again, that working relationship exists very well.
But it's certainly something to keep aware of and manage in an appropriate manner with those. And I think economic development is, director is aware of those or starting to acquire those skills and recognizing the value of, or the...
The potential.
The non-value of participating with the land bank. Because it has, it has both pluses and minuses. So, continuing to do that, maybe asking her to report on that and the advantages of the land bank to us will help educate us and any other concerns that you have about property specifically, getting them to her for her to research or to at least maintain some kind of recognition of over a period of time.
And to Amber's credit, she has done very well. I mean, I've worked with her on a couple of her properties, and she's been extremely helpful on some different stuff we've worked on. All right, thanks, Ace. Appreciate it.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir.
Certainly. Very good.
The land bank is a federal entity.
County.
It's administered by the county.
Okay.
Moving on to the mayor's report, I also would like to congratulate the police department. I really appreciate that. I've heard nothing but good from the social media that was alluded to earlier. And I also am going to try and wear my chief's hat also, or not chief, but the chief's hat. We also received a recognition from the Renaissance Festival that was presented to the Bonner Springs City Hall in recognition of their generous partnership and support. So, I appreciate that and would like to recognize Roger Clements, the marketing and sales manager from this Kansas City Renaissance Festival. And we greatly appreciate them being a part of our community.
Of course.
And I have this to show for it, so maybe we can get that picture.
Let's get an up close and cut in on it.
Well, you're a Renaissance fellow. Be in there, hop in there, Purple.
It's okay, people don't know that.
Come on, pray.
It works in my advantage sometimes.
Very good. And hopefully, we can make sure they get a copy of that. As far as the activities of the mayor in the last, gosh, month since we've met, did have an opportunity to meet with Windup Johnson County Council on Mayors, which was hosted by Kansas City, Kansas mayor and CEO David Alvey at the, gosh, I always forget the name of it, but the U.S. Soccer Training Academy facility at, just on the other side of the Legends and, I'm sorry, Pinnacle. And their facilities are world-class. I know we're starting to recognize that, and our community may not be participating in the activities that take place there every day, but this is something that is being nationally recognized as a training facility for referees in all levels of soccer as well as coaching. And then also the whole other side with Children's Mercy participation and the rehabilitation and sports medicine management. This is quite a facility, and I was very glad to have them come out last year to the mayor's banquet, and they continue to just be a, quite a facility. It's mind-boggling. Also, the Windup County mayors have scheduled gatherings. We'll usually meet about the third Monday of the month for breakfast, and we have one of those meetings coming up over the holidays that was difficult. I would like to thank everyone for their involvement with the Christmas parade that happened. I don't think we've met since then, or if we did, it was right after that. That was well-received by the community, and it's nice to have that as a part of our community. The spoke, I also spoke with Leadership 2000 at one of their meetings, talking about the local government, and went into a board or a roundtable discussion with the other mayors from the county with Liberal Leadership 2000. I would encourage anyone who would like to participate in the League of Kansas Municipalities' Local Government Day that's coming right up. The deadline for RSVP is tomorrow, so please contact Chris if you're able to put that on your schedule. There's a lot of good information and a lot of good networking with other local government and...
Mr. Mayor, is that one separate from the Wyco development thing?
Yes. And it's in Topeka.
Gotcha.
Oh, I also received several comments about the snow removal in Bonner Springs. Equal for and against. So, not that there has been any of one side or the other. And it is difficult for the public works, and as we have a new director coming on board, they'll be reevaluating how they can best provide that service to the community. And I know some people's idea of timely snow removal is different than other people's, and usually those with snow have a far different approach. I appreciate all that was done over this last big snowfall, and I'm sure they're getting ready for the next one. It sounds as if it will be even more of an impact than the last one. The police department, I'm sure, and the public utilities in closing the streets that had the wire down on it, I don't know if you were all aware of that or not, but there was a wire down on Nettleton that had to be barricaded off and for citizen's safety, and looked like it certainly did the job. The barriers certainly did the job, as well as the continuing impact on normal traffic for Shidley Avenue. So, there's a lot of things going on. It's a normal part of business in a city, but recognizing if anyone has concerns, please reach out to the city hall about areas that may have gotten missed on a snow plowing program. That's the only way we'll know about it. They also have a lot of, they're stretched about as thin as they can when the big snows come, so recognizing that a little bit of patience goes a long way. I greatly appreciate that. Also, as soon as the snow's gone, we'll be starting another pothole season. I'm sure they'll be expanding, they'll be expanding nicely if they haven't already. So, please take advantage of all the avenues of communication that the city has opened to all the citizens for reporting those potholes, and they'll be remediated as quickly as possible. Unless we have any other questions for me specifically, seeing none, we are adjourned.